Good evening, the council meeting of August 20th will come to order. We'd ask all in attendance to turn off or silence your electronic devices. And as we prepare to open our meeting, would share that three of us seated at the dais had the opportunity to recently attend the League of Cities Conference. And was struck by a testimonial offered by the City of Palatka. The mayor shared, "We were a divided city. We were divided by economics, we were divided by demographics, we were divided by race, we were divided by political affiliation. We didn't know what to do." After a series of focus groups, they said, "Our city was mended, and the only thing we chose to focus on was to focus on love over hate." So let us be mindful of that as we stand to honor God and country. Father God, you tell us in Colossians 3:14, "Above all things put on love, which is the bond of perfection." May this evening's proceedings be sown together with the invisible threads of love, doing good, meeting needs, shedding offenses, showing compassion, projecting friendliness. That's the uniform of a winning council serving our city well. Father, if there be disagreements, let us attack issues, but not people. We plead now for great discernment, wisdom, kindness, and for positive results to dominate our work. We pray this in the name above all names, amen. And with hands to heart, let us pledge our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, forms are available in the back of the room and may be handed to the clerk to the right. And at this point, we'd ask James Jacob, constituent relations, from the office of Congressman Ross Spano to come to the podium. Good evening, James.
Good evening, good to see everybody. You guys weren't lying when you said you had me right at the front. I wasn't expecting it to go that quickly. I appreciate that. As you guys know, Congressman Spano has been involved in the fight against human trafficking ever since he was in the State House, and is taking that fight on to DC. So he heard about some of the initiatives here at the city, was very, very proud of you guys, and wanted to, in his capacity, commend you for the work that you've done. One of the cool things that you get to do when you're a congressman is you get to read into the congressional record. They get a minute-long, and I think it's two times a week to be able to do this on any calls that basically they see fit and worthy of the honor. So it will be in the congressional record for the rest of history. So it's a nice little honor, just something simple that he could do for you guys. So if you'll allow me, I'm going to read what he has in the record for you guys, commending you for your work, and then I've got two copies of it to pass along to you. I apologize, they did not stay very dry in the rain when I took them out of the office the other day, so there's some smudges on the front, but hopefully they'll find their way to a frame anyway. So, Mr. Speaker, I rise today to commend the City of Temple Terrace and Mayor Mel Girardot for officially declaring the city a trafficking-free zone. As part of the effort, the City of Temple Terrace has pledged to take important steps to crack down on buyers and the sex trade, which will reduce the demand for sex workers and decrease the number of victims trafficked specifically. Temple Terrace is implementing a zero-tolerance policy where city employees will be automatically terminated if they are caught soliciting prostitutes. The Temple Terrace Police Department has also been encouraged to increase enforcement against buyers of sex workers by conducting more stings. And finally, city staffers are required to take mandatory training on how to spot signs of trafficking and how to help potential victims. This is a monumental step forward for our community, and I am honored to join the City of Temple Terrace and Mayor Mel Girardot in the fight against human trafficking. Signed, Ross Spano, Member of Congress, Florida 15. So it's something simple, guys, and he knows that, but he wanted to use the capacity he had to say, "Good job," and thank you. He sincerely appreciates it. And as you guys know, anytime our office can help with these efforts, please reach out to us.
And James, before you step away, I want to thank you. And Congressman Spano was gracious enough to spend time with our Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. And in doing so, he certainly had an influence last year, but this year, as our teens have broken into project groups, one of the projects that they're going to be taking on is making sure the training rolls out to the seven high schools that they represent on the Mayor's Youth Leadership Council. So thank you so much, and I'll be right down. Shake your hand. Mr. Stevenson ensured that every single city employee was scheduled for a time to have a four-hour training on human trafficking, and several of our departments have gone above and beyond that. I'm looking at leisure services now, and I know that they're going above and beyond to ensure even part-time employees are exposed to the importance of being able to see bad actors in our community. So thank you so much. Next, if Kevin Woodard, Recreation Force Senior Programming and Events Leader, would come to the podium. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members, City Manager. Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to come up tonight and address you and the citizens of Temple Terrace and our neighbors in the surrounding community. We're very happy to bring to you an invitation tonight, and to all the citizens, for the 30th Annual Senior Expo to be held at the Lightfoot Center on September 13th, which coincidentally is the day after September 12th, which is the dedication date for Lightfoot Center in 1965. This year, we're very happy to announce that between 9:00 and noon, we have around 40 vendors that are going to be onsite at Lightfoot. Again, I want to stress, this is a senior expo, but we want to have family members come, we want to have caregivers come. Our goal with this expo is to now get information to seniors that they need to have for making their lives better day-to-day and into the future. And you see on your invitation that we had several sponsors step up this year. We want to especially thank Promise Point for being our title sponsor. They're going to have a lot of information about their senior living community, especially their memory center that they have to help seniors with memory problems located right here in Temple Terrace. And we know that all of our families and seniors don't know about the resources that we have available. So HART's going to be there for transportation, we're going to have vein screening there, we're going to have cognitive representatives there, we'll have skin cancer screening there. All of this will be free for our seniors, and we just want to make sure that we get the word out and let our seniors and families know that we care about our seniors, we've got an awesome team that is dedicated to senior activities five days a week here in Temple Terrace at Lightfoot Center. And this is an opportunity for us to bring in USF representatives and caregivers, we've got doctors' offices represented, a broad range, a spectrum, even down to Shaughnessy Lawn Care is going to be there. If you're worried about your yard and you need somebody to help you with that, we've taken the steps to have them provide transportation from the parking lot in golf carts. So we're doing everything we can to make sure our seniors are comfortable. We invite you to come out, and I'd be remiss right now if I didn't say hi to about 20 folks back at Lightfoot. We've reinstituted potluck nights, so we're doing that once a month at Lightfoot. And I told them when I came up, I'd give a shout-out to them. I don't know why I was missing potlucks. So I also included this purple sheet for you all. This is our senior calendar. We produce this once a month for the seniors, and it's a great rundown of the activities and things that we are doing at Lightfoot for our seniors. You notice today, the potluck dinners represented there, and also we had National Radio Day. So did you know that the Eiffel Tower, while built for the World's Fair, was due to be scrapped in 20 years? But at the outset of World War I, they realized that they could make it a large antenna and intercept radio signals from Germany, and it saved the Eiffel Tower. So we learn all kinds of interesting facts about things in our expiration times, and these are the kind of things that we're doing with our seniors now. So I appreciate the time very much. If anyone needs more information, please come to the Lightfoot Center. You can pick up one of the pamphlets or invitations and spread the word. We want to have as many seniors and families and caregivers come as possible and make this a successful event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Counsel, there is one vacancy on the Riverwatch Task Force. The city received two applications from Thomas Zarella and Greg Barnhill. Would the applicant like to address counsel?
Hi there, my name is Tom Zarella. I live at 11501 Humbert Place, and I've been a resident of Temple Terrace for the last 14 years. Thanks for the opportunity to speak in front of you. As I said in my application, I've been interested in a number of features in this city that I think helped define our great city. I've originally tried out for the advisory board for the golf course, and I thought this could be an excellent place for me to start getting more involved in our city, which has been my goal. I am aware of the requirements of the position, which is, I think, a three-year term. I don't have any plans to leave the city currently. And yes, I think that's all I would like to tell you. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Zarella. Is Mr. Barnhill here this evening? Not seeing Mr. Barnhill. Each council member has a ballot, and if you would vote, please vote and pass your ballot down to the city clerk to be tallied.
Each council member voted for Thomas Zarella?
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Zarella, and thank you for your willingness to serve our community. Counsel, there is...
Can I have a motion?
Oh, apologies. Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Zarella? All in favor, signify with aye. Or is there a motion? I apologize. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay, sign. Thank you. There is one vacancy on the School Support Committee. The city received one application from Christine Gisa. Would the applicant like to address counsel? Not seeing the applicant here. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Christine Gisa to the School Support Committee for a term extending from August 2019 until August 2022?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye. Opposed, nay, sign. Thank you, motion carries. If the minutes of the August 6, 2019, City Council Meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of the August 6, 2019, City Council Meeting.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye. Opposed, nay, sign. Thank you, motion carries. For persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comments on items that are not on the agenda, our directors in attendance do make note of those items that are related to city business and do follow-up and follow-through. This evening thus far, I have one form from Stuart Collins.
Good evening, thank you, council members and mayor. Again, my name is Stuart Collins, I'm a resident here in Temple Terrace. Today, I want to speak to you about experience I had recently. I'm an avid hiker, I love going hiking on my weekends. I go out to Little Manatee River State Park, Wilderness Park, right up the road here on Old Morris Bridge Road. I went to, I found out about Riverfront Preserve here in Temple Terrace. It's the largest park in Temple Terrace, and it's only got about a mile and a quarter, mile and a third of trails, but when I went out there, I was a bit disappointed. Currently, it is the rainy season, so it is a bit muddy out there right along the Hillsborough River, but a lot of the trails just seem in disrepair and in need of some tender loving care. Fortunately, I was able to get in contact with Carl Langfeld. He was in charge, he's in charge of the trails here in Temple Terrace. And he says, you know, Florida colleges come out and help out with volunteer. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention, you know, how important our trails and parks are in Temple Terrace. I think that that little park there is an untapped jewel. I'm sure many of you have been up to Lettuce Lake Park, right there on the river, and when I was looking into this park, I saw that back in 2010, there was a pamphlet and said there were plans for extensive trails and boardwalks to be put in there. And doesn't look like any of that has happened, so I just would ask that you would look into this park and give it some care and make it a kind of a gem here in Temple Terrace that people can go and, you know, relax and enjoy the nature and maybe go for a run or a small little hike. So that's, that's all I really got to say, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Item 8A, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement for the division and distribution of five-cent local operation fuel tax. Mike Merrill, Hillsborough County Administrator, will explain. Mr. Merrill.
I should, uh, thank for speaking.
Is it about the sales tax, sir?
Uh, not entirely, just a couple of other things on the, I submitted a paper.
You said it's about sales tax?
No, it wasn't just the sales tax, I apologize. I did submit a paper.
Yes, sir, we had you responding to the sales tax, that's what your form said, so I will call you up, sir.
There's a couple of other things.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Merrill.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Mike Merrill, County Administrator for Hillsborough County. And your City Manager, Charles Stevenson, asked me to be here tonight to answer any questions and explain the interlocal process. So this is a process that the county and the cities have followed for a number of years for all of the gas taxes that we currently levy. The County Commission will be considering tomorrow at their regular meeting in a public hearing whether to levy the additional five cents of gas tax that's permitted under state law, which is a local option. The Board of County Commissioners is authorized to do that, does not require a voter referendum. And so, under, under state law, there's a couple of different paths here. The, the gas taxes are shared with the cities, and in all cases, the typical method of sharing is based on population. And that's the way that we've shared all of the existing gas taxes. And so, the, the provision in state law is that to take advantage of that population-based sharing of the gas tax, there has to be interlocal agreements adopted by the three jurisdictions and the county. And so that's what led to your item tonight. The other path would be a case where there are no interlocal agreements, and in that case, the formula in state law looks to prior transportation expenditures of all the jurisdictions to compute basically a sharing formula. So in that type of method, actually, the cities of Temple Terrace and Plant City and the county would get a lesser distribution of the gas tax than we would under the population-based formula. I have one of our county attorneys here who can explain it in more detail, but it's, but that's really the essence of it. The City of Tampa and Plant City, city councils have already approved their interlocal agreements. And so, it brings us to where we are this evening, and as I said, tomorrow is a public hearing. Obviously, I cannot predict or guarantee whether the County Commission will in fact levy the five cents. There's many issues, of course, to take into account, and there'll be a lively discussion, I'm sure, and there'll be a lot of public comment. But that's basically where things stand today, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Prior to council questions, Mr. Merrill, I have to ask if there are members of the public wishing to comment on this item, and we do have, we do have several sheets this evening. First, Mary Nell O'Dowd.
Hi, I reside at 518 Girard, here in Temple Terrace. I thought I was signing up to speak about the prospective increase in taxes. This, this is it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I am against it. I think it's regressive, much like the tax item on the ballot last fall, which the NAACP came out against, it's regressive. It hurts working people who commute. You and I, most of us here, it would not bother us an iota. But people who depend upon their vehicles, perhaps that aren't as energy-efficient as others, would pay a much more higher percentage of their income toward this gas tax. And I'm against it on that basis.
Thank you, Ms. O'Dowd.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I reside at 521 Lantern Circle. And I, I know there's a resolution to accept the agreement, but I mainly came to speak about the fact that I am against increasing the tax, and I would suggest that anyone that is really interested in speaking out about it to show up tomorrow at the Board of County Commission meeting too, because that's where you can really make a difference. But while I'm here, I'd like to give my opinion. So the current tax is six cents per gallon in Hillsborough County, and the proposal is to increase it by five cents to 11 cents per gallon, which is almost double. And I, as Mary said, I agree that it would be regressive, and the tax would affect all residents, including those who might be senior citizens or people that are on a lower budget or people that have lower incomes. So gas prices, to me, are already high enough, so do we really need to add an extra tax to that? And a burden on people who could afford it the least. A referendum passed in November, the taxes, an extra one cent for our sales tax, and that's supposed to be used for transportation. And I assume that's a lot of what you use a gas tax for, is for transportation. So it's almost like a double tax. The eight-and-a-half cent tax that we now have in Hillsborough County is the highest in the state. I feel that the county should try to balance their budget based on their property taxes, the one-and-a-half cent extra sales tax, and the other sources of income that they have, and not to keep adding taxes and fees. So as I said, as anyone who's really interested in trying to oppose this, I suggest that they go to the County Commission meeting tomorrow, and in general, I oppose any kind of new taxes or fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snelling. Charles Loeb, Mr. Loeb.
My name is Charles Loeb, I live near you all in Tampa. I'm not so much opposed to the tax, I don't drive, but I'm more wary of it. I tend to feel not so much that, you know, more like how if you have to have it, that it's being administered properly, and doesn't turn out to be like all for transportation. In other words, where it's going to end up in court, where the public is not going to have a say in where the money goes should it, should the thing pass. And, and that there is like a plan of implementation, like the school board did with their sales tax. In other words, in other words, so it's just done right if it's going to be done, rather than done the way all for transportation was done. This is more my concern on this. I may address the other two things I wanted to...
Yes, Mr. Loeb.
First of all, I wanted to compliment the city on the park on between 52nd and 53rd Street over on Serena. You're really making that nice, and it's still in the process of being finished. It's near the school, and I admit I was over by the school, I was talking to school crossing guard today, and I was telling them how it would be nice to have some carpooling, but hopefully that maybe more kids will be able to walk to school with the sidewalk being on the north side of the street. I also wanted to thank the city too for the way they displayed my, my donation from back when, my donations back from when. It's really beautiful. The library also was looking, Teresa was telling me over that the library was looking for new historical exhibits that they would want to put into the display in the future, but it's absolutely gorgeous, and again, I wanted to thank the city mentioned that. And hope that people will go take a look at it and go take a look at the other exhibits in the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb.
Thank you. David Pogoralek, 1534 North River Hills Drive. First, I want to apologize to all of you, because I know that the idea of the gas tax is not really your thing, it's a Hillsborough County thing, but since Mr. Merrill's here today, I thought it'd be important for him to hear from, from the constituents of Temple Terrace about how we feel about the tax. And I too am against it. I mean, I think they, Hillsborough County has to keep in mind that property values have gone up, so you're automatically getting more money. You do have the, the extra sales tax, which gives you more transportation money if you're ever, if anybody ever gets it. The, there's discussion of increasing the bed tax, there's discussion of increasing stormwater taxes. When's it going to stop? Where does it stop? There's also discussions of increasing the impact fees for the developers. So there's, there's all these taxes, and you know, everybody, you can talk about the fact that a lot of these funds go to different places, but they all come out of one place, my pocket. So it's just, where's the stop? So I would hope that you would just take the message back to your, your place of business and tell them that City of Temple Terrace is not in favor of doubling the gas tax. That's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pogoralek.
Mayor, Council. My name is Don Balaban, I'm born and raised here. I own farms and businesses in Hillsborough County and Tampa. I'm against this tax. Hillsborough County recently has adopted a tax-and-spend policy, solid wage increases, and possibly only one day a week pickup, which is ridiculous. Stormwater tax, over 100% increase. It's going to cost hundreds of dollars more for most people living in the Hillsborough County area. Highest sales tax in the state of Florida. If anybody goes to purchase a new vehicle now, it costs you $500 more in Hillsborough County to purchase a new vehicle, just for sales tax. It's ridiculous. And now you want to increase the gas tax. Cut waste first. Old and poor people on fixed income are suffering. Homelessness is going crazy. I'm born and raised here, I see it every day, it's out of control. We are going to be like California if we keep tax-and-spend policies like this up. The poor working class are going to have to move to Bartow, Polk County, every place else, got to get out of Hillsborough County. We're heading just like California. You can kiss affordable housing goodbye in our county, which I believe a lot of the new county commissioners ran on that. I see they're really keeping their word. Two of my neighbors here in Temple Terrace in the last month moved to Pasco County. They've been my neighbors for over 30 years. They got tired of it. The sales tax was the final straw for them. They pay less property taxes, they purchase larger homes, and they pay a lot less when they go to Home Depot, Best Buy. It's ridiculous. Now, what we do, me and my friends and my relatives, when we buy a big purchase at Best Buy, Home Depot, those, we'll wait and go and buy it in St. Pete or Pasco County. It's cheaper. It's ridiculous that we have to do that. I wanted to also ask Mr. Merrill, is this going to affect farmers who are exempt for agriculture for fuel? Are you able to answer that?
I noticed it was... Just so I can be on the record, no, it does not affect individuals.
All right, thank you. I think we should have been given more information on the actual amount of increase in the tax. You had to ask to let us know it. It should have been given to us at the beginning to know what, what they're trying to do. If they're saying up to 12, hold on to your wallet, because they'll get 12 out of you. They got the majority. Well, also, I want to take, take this moment to thank Temple Terrace for making our rec center the diamond of our community again. It's a great improvement, and I want the mayor and the council to support their purchase of trying to get in their budget to replace the 20-plus-year-old equipment that they want to update in our rec center. But again, I want to thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Balaban. At this point, counsel, I would ask if you have any questions for Mr. Merrill? Councilman Donahue.
Would you tell us, please, the difference between the expenditures for the one-cent sales tax and this five-cent sales tax? And this is not a percentage tax, this is a five cents.
That's correct.
Right, I know I've had a couple of people comment to me that it was 5%. It's, it's not 5%. So would you just explain the difference between what the expenditures could be, or as they're outlined?
Yes, so with some small exceptions, the eligible expenditures... So with some small exceptions, the eligible expenditures are the same for the transportation surtax and the gas tax. It's not worth mentioning the difference in terms of your question of how it would be spent. And so I will just share with you some of the thoughts of the commissioners who placed this before the commission public hearing as to why they felt it was necessary. And I certainly understand what the speakers are saying. So I'm not here to advocate for or against the tax. That's not my job. But one of the things that we are struggling with is that in the surtax language, the charter, essentially what's being challenged now at the Supreme Court was a formula that the sponsors of the surtax placed in the charter that limits how that money can be spent. It actually doesn't affect Temple Terrace or Plant City. You were, both of those cities were carved out of that requirement. So it affects the City of Tampa and Hillsborough County. And just simply what it does is, so our share of the surtax, the county commission's share is about 54%. What the charter does is it says you can only spend so much of your share in these categories. And when you go down, what we call them are buckets. When you go down the buckets, the last bucket is the one that's the most flexible. The other four buckets really limit very significantly the amount we can spend on road expansion. And so the fifth bucket is a very small percentage relative to the other four. So in essence, it means that we may get 54% of the tax. We can't spend much of it on roads, but 2/3 of the people who voted for the tax live in the unincorporated part of the county, where it's really not going to be feasible for a number of years to run major transit. So the commissioners have said, if the surtax survives all the legal challenges, in order for the county to really address all of those deficient road problems, we really unfortunately then do need another funding source. And that's what the gas tax would provide. So that's kind of the logic behind it. That's why it was placed before the commission in a public hearing. I do want to correct a statement that was made in terms of the total amount of gas taxes that are levied. Actually, the county levies nine cents of gas tax. There's six cents of local option. There's two so-called constitutional levies. And then there's a ninth penny for, it's basically called a pothole tax. It's going to only be used for repaving potholes. So there's currently nine cents, so this would, additional five would raise it to a total of 14%. So I just wanted to make that correction. And as the prior speaker pointed out, which is obvious, but I think it's important, by approving the interlocal agreement, this body is not endorsing the tax, whether it should be levied or not. You're not, by approving the interlocal, you're not endorsing the levy of the tax. What you're doing is preserving greater revenue for yourself should the tax be passed, because, as I mentioned earlier, without the interlocal agreement, we default to this other formula in state law, which creates a lower amount of distribution for you and for the county. So for whatever that's worth, I'll just put that on the table for you.
That's a very good point. Are there any other questions? Councilman Chalera.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill, thank you for, first of all, taking the time to be here this evening.
Sure.
You and your team, normally you're on this side of the deal, so...
Feels a little different.
It's weird to see you on the other side, but thank you for being here tonight. And again, I know you're just the messenger. Policies are put in place by the elected folks in the county, and it's your job to follow through with what the wishes are. I have a couple of questions on, and you touched on it originally. If there's an interlocal agreement in place is one formula. If there's a statutory agreement in place, it's another formula. A statutory agreement would be if this council would not support the interlocal agreement, then a formula would be concocted by the way that the statutes are written. So it's my understanding that the interlocal agreement, if there's an interlocal agreement in place, the percentage of the city would be higher.
Correct.
Okay. How much higher? Do you have an idea?
So our budget department did an estimate. We looked at the prior transportation expenditures of all the jurisdictions, because that's what the default formula calls for. So Temple Terrace would lose about $250,000 a year. I'm sorry. Is that right? 250, yeah. $250,000 a year. So it's about, you'd lose about half, roughly, of the revenue that you would otherwise get with the population-based formula with the interlocal agreement.
Okay. Okay. You know, I'm not in favor of it. I think that there are quite a bit of taxes in place already. Having said that, I can see the writing on the wall. As you said earlier, if you support an interlocal agreement, it doesn't mean you support the tax.
Correct.
And I get that. You made that very clear, and I certainly appreciate your honesty in explaining it so we can understand it. I think it's more of a level playing field. I know the folks in Tampa have supported it. The folks in Plant City have already, you know, supported it, and it's before us. I know ultimately it will be up to the county commissioners tomorrow, and I believe it has to pass by a supermajority vote.
That's correct. Five votes.
So it has to be five votes. So that's really where it's going to lie. I will, after putting, you know, thoughts and doing some research to it, you know, I'm not in favor of it, especially since we are, there is already, the citizens have voted for a one-cent sales tax increase, and what I was told is the one-cent sales tax increase is around $300 million, and this one here is about $30 million, if those numbers are accurate.
That's about right.
But just a guesstimate. Temple Terrace's portion would be a much smaller piece, but whether we vote for it or against it on the interlocal agreement really doesn't matter. Doesn't say you, we're going to get more or less. A statutory would give us less if we vote against it. An interlocal agreement would give you a larger piece of the pie. So although I do not, and I would be more of interest to see if the court case right now, if that was to be knocked down, then the five cent I would look at a little more, you know, seriously. But with that one already in place, I feel like we're dipping the pockets of the taxpayers two times. And I get, you're just the messenger. I'm not, you know, addressing you. I'm just trying to explain my reasoning for the position that I'm taking. So, you know, I will vote in favor of the interlocal agreement, but I don't support the tax. Just want to make sure that's on record. It doesn't really matter how, again, it's up to county commissioners tomorrow whether the citizens of this community will be taxed for it or not. So I just wanted to put on record my position on that. And again, I really want to thank you and your team for taking the time to come out tonight and explain this to our citizens.
And I will convey that, as well as the sentiments of your speakers, to the board tomorrow in the board meeting, so they're aware of what I heard here tonight, so.
Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Merrill, thank you for coming out. Good presentation, a better understanding of what's going on, particularly with the delineation of how much we'll receive with and without the approval of the interlocal I, too, will probably, will vote in favor of the interlocal agreement, only because we're shortchanging our citizens if we don't. But I would like to see if it's possible for us as a body to propose a resolution against the tax itself that can be presented to county commission for tomorrow's meeting. I'm not sure if that's, I don't want to sound hypocritical, but if, can we draft a resolution? We're just against the tax. It's too much. Stop. Enough already. And I would make that motion if we can.
And prior to, and I will come back to you for a motion. I would ask if there are any other questions of Mr. Merrill, and then we'll go back to Mr. Schisler. We'll defer.
Sure.
Mr. Schisler, motion?
I think we have to, we'd have to address the option first, or, I don't know.
Well, I have no motion for that on the table. So there was a motion that had started.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the parties involved.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Is there further discussion? Councilman Ross.
I just want to, excuse me, I just want everybody to be clear on my position on this, as I feel the same way as Mr. Chalera. If we were voting on the gas tax, this would be a slam dunk. I'm not in favor of raising it for all the same reasons that the speakers and Mr. Chalera have already alluded to. Just to be clear, we are not voting on the tax. We are voting on the interlocal agreement. If this tax passes, I think it's important that the residents of Temple Terrace get our fair share and that it doesn't all wind up going to the City of Tampa, which is what would happen. So I, too, am in favor of just not the tax, the interlocal agreement.
Is there any further discussion? I would just, for the record, like to share that in reviewing the tape from county commission, the sentiments of three of the commissioners was, we're putting the cart before the horse. The race to get a five cents additional, based on what might happen at the Supreme Court. And it's just extremely distasteful that more money is being taken out of the pockets of Temple Terrace and citizens all across the county. I feel as though, at this point, it's punitive in nature, Temple Terrace play, we'll keep more money, and it seems as though that's at the discretion of the county to do that. And so that's being held over our heads. And again, it seems very distasteful and not a strong or a positive partnership. With that said, if there is no further discussion, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Very good. Mr. Schisler.
Yes, I would like to propose a resolution by council to take a stand against this tax increase for all the reasons that we've discussed, particularly with the referendum that passed, and just, you know, it's got to stop. It's got to stop. And I would, and that be given, hopefully, to council, to the county commission before the vote tomorrow, so at least let them know what this body thinks.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Merrill, for your attendance this evening.
Thank you for attending.
And I will be, I will be speaking to Chairman Miller a little bit later this evening. I'll let him know, I guess, to expect the letter tomorrow morning. Is that how you're going to do that? By letter?
I'm sorry. I would just like...
We will go to Ms. Shashan, and then we'll go to Councilman Chalera. Ms. Shashan, if you could answer that question.
If you could just ask your question again.
Oh, will you be sending a letter, then, to the board tomorrow morning, or...
Because it's, the meeting is so, is going to be so early, it would be easiest and quickest for you to present your position to them in a letter. We can still draft a resolution tomorrow as well, but a quick letter stating that you have passed that resolution would be the fastest way to let them know.
Okay. I'll let him know to expect the letter, and we'll get it in the record, so.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Councilman Chalera.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I would just ask if that, the motion that Mr. Schisler have made, has made, can be actually read into the record at the meeting, instead of just handing it out, so the general public could be made aware, at least where the City of Temple Terrace stands on the direction we've given. We voted for it for this reason, but, in all respect, we're against the tax. So if that could be read into the record, I think that would get, the public would be aware of it as well.
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Next, a first reading of an ordinance, Chapter 2, Pensions and Retirement. Captain Mike Lowell, past chairman of the Police Pension Board, will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Captain Mike Lowell, the Police Department, immediate past chairman of the pension board, before you yet again with more business coming from the pension board.
I couldn't tell what it was.
It's the shelf.
Oh.
I won't touch the podium.
I thought somebody was knocking on the door.
Due to recent and projected retirements under the current provisions of our pension plan, the Police Department is projecting to lose over half its command staff this fiscal year, or actually this calendar year. We've already lost one, and we do have one other impending retirement. In an effort to keep seasoned leadership around, especially with all the turnover we've had in the Police Department, the pension board is putting forth a ordinance recommendation to city council to extend our current drop provisions from five years to eight years, an additional three years. This will allow the city to retain its experienced command staff members and other senior members of the department that are also in drop. And this provision does expire or does sunset in three years. There is a nominal cost to the pension plan of $2,260, but I think that's pretty negligible considering the amount of experience it will be able to retain. And at this point, the pension board and staff does recommend that city council approve this ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Captain Lowell. And before questions from council, I'd ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address council on this item. Seeing none, council, are there any questions?
I do have one question. The total cost, is that per year or the whole three-year plan?
That's the total cost.
The total three-year.
Yes, ma'am.
That is negligible.
Are there any other questions, council? If the clerk would please retitle of ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Administration and Elections, Article 3, Officers and Employees, Division 3, Pensions and Retirement, Subdivision 5, Police Officers of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, amending Section 2-262, Deferred Retirement Options Program Drop, Providing for Separability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing an Effective Date.
Thank you. If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance as described.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Councilman Donahue, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. The ordinance will appear for a second reading in public hearing on Tuesday, September 3, 2019. Item 8C, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat registration fee revenue. Rob Staley, police captain, will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Captain.
Members of council. I'm here tonight requesting your approval of a resolution regarding the interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat registration fees. In accordance with Florida law, Hillsborough County imposes an annual registration fee on all vessels exceeding 12 feet in length that are operated and stored within the county. Since 1993, the city has operated under an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County for the shared distribution of these funds. As specified in the agreement, the city's $60,000 funding allocation will be used towards the salary and benefits of one full-time Marine Patrol officer. I stand for questions.
Are there members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, I would ask council if there are any questions. Councilman Chambers.
Not so much a question, but a comment. Also, these funds in the past have been used to renovate the boat ramps at River Hills Park and Rotary Park on Fowler. It's been a while since we've gotten that. When I used to work, right before I left, I was negotiating with the county director to distribute these funds. So that's something I would like our council to direct our staff to pursue.
Are there any other questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat registration fee revenue and return for the city's continuing to provide marine law enforcement coverage within the city during the fiscal year 2020. Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve the interlocal agreement.
Thank you, Councilman Ross. Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution approving a contract with Habitat for Humanity for the sale of properties on Sunnyside Road. Greg Polly, Business Relations Manager, will explain. Mr. Polly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council staff. This item first came before you a few weeks back. It involves the sale of two residential lots identified as lots 13 and 14 of the Temple Terrace Estates, Block C3, located on Sunnyside, close south of Bullard Parkway. An invitation to bid was originally published on May 10, and then again republished on May 17. The land was also posted for sale, and real estate flyers were distributed. City received eight proposals. City received eight proposals. On July 16th, at the city council meeting, city council adopted Resolution 6119, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract for sale to Habitat for Humanity of Hillsborough County, Florida. Subsequently, Mr. Stevenson negotiated the proposed land sale agreement in the amount of $105,000 with Habitat for Humanity. Regarding the street addresses that I originally referred to on the 16th, those were temporary addresses assigned by the surveyor. The county has updated the permanent addresses, and your packet reflects the new addresses. That being, Lot 13 is referred to as 202 Sunnyside, and Lot 14 is 186 Sunnyside. At this time, staff recommends approval of the resolution before you, authorizing the city manager to execute the proposed land sale agreement with Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $105,000, and also authorize the city manager to execute the included special warranty deed at closing. And finally, I'd just like to wrap up. Obviously, I'm available for any questions, but Mr. Ron Spoor, Chief Operating Officer for Habitat, is also in the audience tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauli. I would ask if there are members of the public that would like to comment on this item. Annette Rennie.
Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. I ask council to table this issue tonight. And there's a reason for that. It had always been that the staff has worked for council, and council has worked for the taxpayers. Research needs to be done on the issue at hand tonight. Since the survey and appraisals were paid for by Habitat in January of 2019 and February for the appraisal, that means this was in play in 2018. Also, Brockspur and Holland were disposed of. I don't know if council, I know the citizens didn't have knowledge of it. This is unacceptable. Procedures and resolutions need to be placed with council having full knowledge and of all, of any and all land disposals. Why also did we ask for, or did staff ask for reimbursement of $6,000 when you didn't pay for it? We didn't pay for that. Habitat paid for it. So why are we asking the other bidders to give $6,000? For what? I ask that you table this tonight, do intense research on all the paperwork and the background and this whole deal, and then bring it back up before, for us to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I would ask council if they have any questions. Seeing, Councilman Donahue.
Ms. Shashan, would you please, I know that there have been, Florida Attorney General has an opinion on the disposal of property, and do you mind explaining that and then how that affects us?
The, the Attorney General opinions with regard to the disposition of surplus municipal property, and forgive me, I'm getting laryngitis today, going to do my best, have addressed the issue of what restrictions are placed on local government in dealing with their surplus property. There are Florida statutes that govern how a county must dispose of surplus property, but there are none concerning how a municipality is to go about it. The only requirements of the, of the municipality is that it do so in the best interest of the public. So therefore, the, how it's bid, or whether it's even goes to the highest bidder, is, there's no particular requirement for that. As long as the governing body decides to dispose of the property in a manner that is in the best interest of this, of the public, the city, that's all that needs to be done.
Good, thank you. Are there any other questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving a contract with Habitat for Humanity for the sale of properties on Sunnyside Road? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the sale of the properties.
There is a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second discussion. Councilman Ross.
Yes, I, I would kind of like to see us table this too, just to get some of these questions answered. I was on the losing side of this motion, and I fully believe in the process of, of once the council's decided something, I don't, I mean, I don't want to try to throw a wrench in it later on just because I didn't get my way. But there are questions that have been raised since that vote that I'd like to know the answers to. And that doesn't mean that I'm wanting to overturn it, the decision to go with Habitat if that, if that's the wish of the council. I, I yield to that. I don't, I mean, it's not personal. I don't have a problem with that. But I would like to know some of the answers to the $6,000 reimbursement question and the timeline of it. I, I would be in favor of tabling it just for, I don't think it would take that long to get these answers. We could probably get these answers before the next meeting. And they have to go before the county to get funding anyway. So there's a long, there's a lag between now and the time that they're able to close. Perhaps we could get the answers to these questions and to the satisfaction of, of everybody.
Other discussion, Councilman Schisler.
Yes, what is the proposed closing deadline with the county? Do we have any idea?
I believe it's 90 days. 60 days.
60 days. This is a, a very problematic issue for me. I see both sides of the discussions. And having voted in favor of it to begin with, I, I feel that it's not, not in the city's best interest to not move forward with what we've got going. However, having said that, if there were any issues or any problems, and I intend to bring this up in, in new business, to correct this going forward, I'm not going to, I don't want to start overturning everything we've done in the past. It's done, it's done. And move forward. But fix any problems, whether they're perceived or real, going forward. So at this point, I'm inclined to proceed forward with it. However, if somebody, if, if council wishes to table, and I could possibly be persuaded to table it to, to moving forward, but I don't think that we're going to come to much of a different approach to it. We'll fix the issues separately. And I think that'd be the best approach for us moving forward. We took a stand, and we stick with that stand, and then we'll, we'll, we'll fix it. We got a problem, we'll fix it.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Councilman Chambers.
I agree with Mr. Schisler. We don't have a policy in place. We followed what we had. There are some questions, but I agree that we need to fix this, and I'm prepared to support something later on tonight. Not sure tabling's a good idea.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Chalora.
Thank you. I feel this, I voted against it. I feel that it's a flawed process. And as far as I'm concerned, we do have a policy in place. We've sold redevelopment property. We've gotten appraisals on redevelopment properties. Okay? So we know what that property's worth. I don't know what it's worth. I didn't do any research on it. It's not my job to do any research on it. The, the property was offered at 70-something thousand dollars. Now it's up to $105,000. Just coincidental, that's what the offers were of the other folks that were ahead of Habitat property. The appraisals were done in January, way before the process began. So we do have a process, and our process is obligation to our taxpayers. I don't think any of you guys would take a $15,000 haircut if you were selling a piece of property. It's your money. I don't think it would happen. So I'm not addressing the Habitat issue, I'm addressing the process. I think the process is flawed. The process needs to be vetted, just like we've done. We say we don't have a policy in place. We've done it with redevelopment. I've sat on this council for many years, and, and redevelopment, when we buy or sell property, we get appraisals. And then it's put out to the public, and it's advertised. And that's the way it should be done, especially in the, in the public sector. We are the stewards of the taxpayers, period. So, you know, I do have a problem with the process. I didn't support it then for a different reason, and I'm not going to support it now for the reason I just stated. Our process is flawed. This isn't inked. There's no contracts that are signed. And, you know, to start changing numbers after you select a deal is inappropriate, and I'll tell you why. When we had the developer here, Cushman Wakefield, and there was discussions about the folks bidding on the property, when the gentleman that had purchased, that it was awarded to, purchased Just Breaks Building was a little low, and when I spoke to the realtor and said, you know, he probably needs to bring that up a little bit, he said, we'll bring it up a little bit, we're going to disqualify the process, and we have to start all over again. That happened in this room a couple of months back. To go back and start changing prices as well, and I'm going by the past. This isn't me trying to come up with some new process. I'm going by what we did in the past. So I didn't support it a couple, a month or two ago for one reason. I'm not supporting it tonight for the reasons that I've just stated, and I feel that, you know, it is flawed, and we do get appraisals, and we do advertise, and that price is the price unless something significant happened behind the scenes that we're not aware of. The folks that were here bidding that night were not allowed to come and change their prices. So how's it changing now? The process is flawed. I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, just saying the process is flawed. Because if I was a bidder and I saw the numbers changing, like, why, I'd sit there and say, how come I couldn't change my number? I might have bid more. If you can do it for one, you do it for all. So I won't support it. If, if this council favors to table it, fantastic. We can look at, at it, maybe adopt the policy and continue to move forward. But the way it sits now, I think we need to make sure we do something properly so people from the public don't look at us and start second, second guessing us as well. Thank you.
We'll go to Councilman Donahue, and then Mr. Stevenson.
It's my understanding that at the last meeting, we voted to have the city manager negotiate the deal with Habitat for Humanity. So the fact that we negotiated a better price should be kudos and not looked at as something flawed. So, help me if I'm wrong, but I mean, the bid price was going in, and then he renegotiated the price. So I, I stand to support this project for many reasons, but I also think that I, I'll stand by my motion. Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Donahue is correct, and the direction that we had was to go back to Habitat and not anybody else and negotiate a contract. And that's exactly what your city manager did. I did get a better price out of it because Ron Spoor and myself had a meeting, and I basically asked him how much money he's got. So Ron actually initiated that increase in price, not me. We, we at that point in time had agreed upon a price of $105,000. Our process moving forward with this stuff is not flawed, and I disagree with that perception. And I disagree with the public's perception as something has been done wrong. Florida statute is very clear that we, we have certain responsibilities, and that basic responsibility is to do what's best for the common good of the public. There are no, are no statutory requirements in place for us to, to take the lowest bidder, to advertise it, or do anything. I know when Mr. Chalora, when we're doing CRA stuff, CRA land is a different process altogether. It does not have the same requirements that infill properties have. I have gone through the liberty of making each of you a copy here, and I'd like to pass these down, if I may. There's a chronology of everything we did in order to advertise this property. We did start back in January, attempting to sell this property to an interested party, being Habitat for Humanity who approached us with selling this. The other two properties that we sold then went through the same process. We have not pulled a fast one on anybody. We have done exactly what we've been required to do by law and by the RFP process that we normally put out for invitation to bid anytime. The chronology that was put together here by Mr. Pauli is exactly what we did. It was advertised correctly. It was advertised in the newspaper, certainly brought to council with the recommendation that your city manager go back and negotiate a contract, which is exactly what I did. We started this negotiation in January without the intent of having it bid out under RFP, and we brought it to council, just like we did the other two. There was a suggestion made in the interest of transparency that we put it out for RFP. We took that, we took that suggestion to heart, we then backed up and put it out for RFP. Habitat did pay for the surveys and did pay for the appraisals, and the whole idea behind that cost was to, if in fact they were not the successful aworder of the property, that they would get reimbursed for that. And that was a gentleman's agreement I had with Mr. Spoor. They shouldn't be paying for the appraisals and the, and the surveys if in fact they're not going to get the property. Originally, they were, they were more than willing to do that, which they've done in the past with the other two properties. I don't understand what the perception here is, that something has been done wrong. Something has not been done wrong. The process was followed through with something that we've done all the time. It will continue to do that, that policy of advertising this property for sale. That being said, I would like to move forward with this, but obviously it's up to council to decide what to do with this property.
Is there any further discussion, council? We have a motion and a second. If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving a contract with Habitat for Humanity for the sale of properties on Sunnyside Road? Is there a motion? We have the motion and the second. We've had discussion. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution executing a contact with Florida, a contract with Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and authorizing a withdrawal from the Public Risk Management of Florida. Human Resources Director Janet Bledsoe will explain. Good evening, Ms. Bledsoe.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We wanted to talk with you this evening about the city's risk management insurance, which includes property, casualty, and workers' comp insurances. It's one of the city's largest expenses every year. And we are currently, and have been for many years, a member of Public Risk Management of Florida, which is an insurance pool. In an effort to reduce the city's expense, we published an RFP this summer. We got three responses to the RFP. We got one from Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, FMIT, which is Florida League of Cities, Public Risk Management, which is World Risk Management, and also Bouchard Insurance. We formed a committee. The committee reviewed all of the RFPs and made the recommendation to go with FMIT, Florida League of Cities. So we are here tonight to ask for a resolution executing a contract with FMIT and authorizing a withdrawal from Public Risk Management pool. We have here with us this evening, we have Clay Austin from Florida League of Cities. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bledsoe. And I do have one public comment, form for this. Mr. Adam Balls.
Good evening, council and, and mayor. I'm with Public Risk Management of Florida, and so we just wanted to come and, and thank you guys. You guys have been a member of our pool since 2000. You guys have had three staff members that have been critical parts of our executive board over the years. It was before I joined the team about three, four years ago. But with any of our executive board members, that's a critical part, and they were, you know, some of the original founders of the program. So we are very respectful of, of the process. We've enjoyed the relationship with, with Charles over the years, Janet, and, and Christie. And more or less, just, just wanted to say thank you, guys. I would like to offer help if, if the team- I would like to offer help if, if the team needs it with the transition to FMIT. I've had the opportunity to review the response, and I want to make sure you guys are left in, in the best position possible. So, if you guys are open to a little bit of my professional wisdom before you guys move on to your new venture, be happy to make myself available. And more or less, just want to thank you guys for all the years we've been able to serve you and wish you guys the best of luck. And we'll be here for you guys down the road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask if council has any questions. Councilman Ross.
Mrs. Bledsoe.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm assuming, but I just want to make sure that the policy limits and the benefits and the coverage is the same?
The, the three proposals were not identical, but they were very close. Not enough differences to make, to have a concern.
Okay. So, we're not losing coverage or raising deductibles?
Oh, no. 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 We, we are very pleased with the, the structure of the proposal from FMIT.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to thank Mr. Balls for coming tonight and speaking to us. I have never dealt with PRM personally, but that was a very classy move on your part. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Chambers, and then we'll go to Councilman Schisler.
Ms. Bledsoe, who are the members of your team?
It was myself, Christie Solari, the Finance Director Lynn Boswell, Assistant Finance Director Jim Ingram, the Fire Chief Ian Kemp, and Leisure Services Director Carl Langfield.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody out there for your hard work on that.
It was, yeah. It was a lot.
Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The resolution we approved two months ago or a month ago, that was to begin this process and finalize it.
Right. That was the requirement of the Public Risk Management Pool.
Okay. Just double check. That's what I thought they would validate.
Exactly. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, council? If acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the execution of a contract with Florida Municipal Insurance Trust and authorizing withdrawal from Public Risk Management of Florida. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bledsoe. Item 8F, a resolution approving non-ad valorem assessment to Hampton Oaks subdivision for fiscal year 2019-2020. The city manager will explain. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we use a resolution this evening to approve the non-ad valorem assessment for Hampton Oaks subdivision for fiscal year 2019-2020, back in September of 2014, there was a special assessment area that was created for Hampton Oaks subdivision for street lighting and stormwater management services to be provided by the city. Per statutes, the city must adopt an annual assessment resolution to certify to the tax collector the non-ad valorem assessment role for the area. The tax collector then, then produce a compliant notice of the ad valorem and non-ad valorem for the Hampton Oaks subdivision as described in Florida statute. There are 43 homes, single-family homes, residents in the, in Hampton Oaks subdivision. The assessment for Hampton Oaks is $11,094 or $258 per parcel for the 2019 assessment. With that, we'll move for approval.
Are there members of the public wishing to address council on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask council if there are any questions. Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the non-ad valorem assessment to Hampton Oaks subdivision for fiscal year 2019-2020?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a second public hearing and reading to adopt ordinance 1476 vacating a portion of Broadway Avenue right-of-way with conditions. The public hearing is now open. City Attorney Shashawn will explain.
Yes, as you stated, this is, this, I'm about hit my limit today. This is the second reading of this ordinance. This ordinance concerns the, basically vacating one half of the right-of-way that runs behind the property where the Shell Station is on 56th Street. This, in approving this ordinance, it would put an end to the litigation that has gone on for a number of years concerning this particular right-of-way. The other half of the right-of-way would continue to belong to the city. And one of the conditions is that the property owner of the property, they don't, the Shell Station is basically leased. The property owner, though, would be paying for the recording of this ordinance and this vacation so that it would not cost any more to the city. Also, we are retaining a portion at the end of that right-of-way as it runs into the sidewalk and connects to 56th Street in order to be able to continue to maintain anything that is in that area of the right-of-way. There's an informational sign and a well nearby. That way, we would not have to encroach on any of the property that we, or any of the right-of-way that we are releasing for the public's information. This is not giving up any ownership of any property. We don't own a fee simple there. We simply have a right-of-way that was originally plotted to be used as Broadway Avenue. And according to the city manager, we have no intention of putting Broadway Avenue in there or any other street. So, it would be in the best interest of the public to vacate this particular right-of-way. And I recommend that the ordinance be approved.
Thank you, Ms. Shashawn. Are there members of the public that would like to address council on this item? Seeing none, council questions? The public hearing is now closed. If the clerk would please read title of ordinance 1476.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, vacating and abandoning a section of the Broadway Avenue right-of-way approximately 192 feet in length and 16.25 feet wide adjacent to the east side of the property having street address 8421 North 56th Street located in section 22, township 28 South, range 19, East Hillsborough County, providing for recordation and conditions of vacation, providing severability and ineffective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1476?
Move to adopt the ordinance on the second reading of 1476.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, council? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, council business. First order of council business is charter officers evaluation summaries. Just some comments briefly to be read into the record as we did last year. The mayor and city council evaluate the three staff members that report to directly touch us on an annual basis. Some questions about the process did come up. This is the exact same evaluation tool that was utilized this year as in last year. Staff members were evaluated in three broad areas. Their position results descriptions that highlighted their key result areas based on their contract with the city, their behavioral competencies, and living out the mission of the city. In addition, your mayor and council offered comment on the best assets of each employee as well as developmental or improvement opportunities. The only comments offered here will be comments that were offered by multiple council members across the evaluation period. On the scales of one to 10, it's important to note, a five was meets expectations. On a scale of one to five, the three would indicate meets expectations. So, looking at the summary of the reviews, and I'll go over them, and then if there are any questions from council, I'll be happy to handle those. First, we'll start with Mr. Stevenson, city manager. Mr. Stevenson has six areas that, that are outlined in his position results description. Business operations, communications, financial, planning and organization, problem solving, and community relations. On each of those areas, on a one to 10 scale, again with five as a meet expectations on business operations, the average mean from council was 8.63. Communications, 6.5. Financial, 7.33. Planning and organization, 8.17. Problem solving, 7.67. Community relations, 6.83. Above expectations on all of those areas. On behavioral competencies, which were scored on a one to five, again, three would be meeting expectations. Met expectations in all of those areas with a mean score of responsiveness, 3.83. Excellence, 3.5. Safety, 4.4. Professionalism, 4.0. Ethics, 4.3. Consistency, 3.5. Transparency, 4.4. Living out the mission statement was, was ranked on a scale of one to five. Once again, three meeting expectations. The mean score for Mr. Stevenson was a 4.3. Range of scores, total range of scores on a possible scale of one to 100, the scores ranged from 26 to a 98. The mean score was 74. Most significant assets for Mr. Stevenson. And here, I quoted some of you, although they were sentiments that were repeated multiple times. Runs a tight ship, has developed an outstanding staff, tenacious, driven, available, hardworking, dedicated, professionalism, attention to detail, looks out for the city, again, accessible, pride in work, pride in advancing the city. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. One developmental area, and I think this would probably take a motion from council just to make sure that it is council speaking in unison on a request that was made by, by more than a majority in the comments. Would like to have redevelopment update incorporated into every council meeting to strengthen relationships and communications as this is such an important area. But that was Mr. Stevenson's review. Any questions on Mr. Stevenson's before I move forward? Thank you. Pam Shashawn, our city attorney. Ms. Shashawn also has six key result areas for the city. Ms. Shashawn's key result areas are legal advice, legal review, legal representation, public meetings, administration, and other duties. On legal advice, once again, that mid-range of five is meeting expectations. The mean on legal advice was a 7.33. Legal review, 6.17. Legal representation, 8.16. Public meetings, 6.5. Administration, 8.0. Other duties, 7.17. On the behavioral competencies, which all three of our officers fulfill, responsiveness, 3.5. Excellence, 3.5. Safety, 4.4. Professionalism, 4.3. Ethics, 4.3. Consistency, 4.0. Transparency, 3.6. Living out the mission statement, 3.8. The range of scores for Ms. Shashawn on a scale of one to 100 were 66 to 100 with the mean being 74. Most significant assets of Ms. Shashawn. Well-spoken, professional, did solid work on the transportation tax, positive results in municipal code enforcement board meetings. Developmental areas, accessibility is a challenge. And as was discussed last year, city council is looking for three days per week with an eight-to-five schedule. And then the question on just timeliness of work completion and ensuring our CRA is being moved forward. Any questions on Ms. Shashawn? Next, Cheryl Mooney, our city clerk. Ms. Mooney also has six key result areas for the city. Leadership and management, communication, professionalism, records and research, meetings, and other duties. On a scale of one to 10, again, five is the midpoint, meets expectations. On leadership and management, a 7.0. Communication, 7.33. Professionalism, 8.55. Records and research, 7.67. Meetings, 7.5. Other duties, 7.83. On the behavioral competencies, again, a scale of one to five, responsiveness, 3.33. Excellence, 3.83. Safety, 4.6. Professionalism, 4.83. Ethics, 4.33. Consistency, 3.83. Transparency, 3.83. On living out the mission statement of the City of Temple Terrace, 4.33. The range of scores for Ms. Mooney were 62 to 100 with a mean of 78. Most significant assets of Ms. Mooney. Friendly, positive comments on the staff she has developed, represents the city in a professional manner, positive citizen interactions. Developmental areas, to improve accuracy and proof readings on documents and agendas. Any questions on Ms. Mooney? Thank you all. Thank you, council members, for your reviews. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, Ms. Shashawn, and Ms. Mooney. And that concludes my report on city evaluations. Is there any other carryover business? We will then move to new business. Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we discussed prior in, in the other agenda items, I think it's time that we codify, and I'd like to propose a resolution, that we establish a more fair, more clear, more transparent process for the disposition of our, of our assets. I recognize that the statutes currently govern the counties, but we all know a county's like a little state. So, their rules are different than ours as a municipality. And so, we as a municipality need to adopt our own rules to cover this issue. So, I would like to propose that, and again, I'm not trying to, I'm not craft a resolution just put forward so that they can come back to, so that staff can come back to us with a resolution, that when we're disposing of excess city property, that the appropriate appraisals are done and that those appraisals are shared with us and that we offer the property to the highest bidder. It'll remove any ambigu, ambigu, ambiguities on our part, misperceptions with the public and with the voters. And it should make a much cleaner process and one that's easily defensible on all aspects. And I think we need to put that into place as quickly as possible.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Do we have a motion?
That was a motion, correct?
Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We'll need a second for discussion.
Yes, we do.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
My discussion is, I, I was with you until you got to the part about that we must go with the highest bidder. Because there are other things that come into play many times with, with different items, I mean, across the board. We've seen purchases we've made, we've seen other contracts we've done, and we've never required this council to be hindered by that rule. So, I, I like everything else but that one piece.
I'll pull that. I'm, I'm just trying to make it more transparent, okay? And whatever be the criteria that we reestablish, if you'll pull your second, I'll enter motion.
Sure.
So that we need a process, the one that's definable and one that's defensible. And then, whatever be the reasons, whatever bid we accept, I'm, I'm good with that.
Councilman Chambers.
Yeah. And I will amend my second, but a question. We're talking about land assets because there, if you just use the word assets, I don't want staff to get appraisals for computers, trucks.
I'm sorry. Access, access properties.
You just said, so let's define that we're talking about land, land. Okay? I'm good with that.
Further discussion?
Yeah. So, my question is, what you're asking is that staff bring us back a resolution for us to then approve. We're not saying go, we, we want you to do this, just bring, yeah. So, it's, it's going to come back to us with whatever the bells and whistles. I agree. It's one thing to be implied that we've done the right thing, but it's another to have it in writing. It just makes it easier for everybody going forward. If we could have looked, I mean, I, I searched through the charter and through the ordinances, and I didn't find anything. And that's when the AGO helped me by saying, okay, the state says this, counties have to do this, and then, you know, if you, unless, if you don't have anything in your charter, then it's whatever you want to do. But it will make it easier for us to see if it's been done.
Councilman Ross and then Mr. Stevenson.
Yes, I, I fully agree with the intent and spirit of this. I just wonder if we're maybe getting the cart before the horse a little bit. I, for one, before we tax everybody with, go ahead and draft a resolution, I, my question is, what is, what's best practices for this? We can't be the first municipality in the state of Florida that's come up with something. So, I'd be curious. I, I wish our first step was go tell us what best practices are, and then we make a decision whether we want to do this, codify it in an ordinance or, but I, I don't see that we need to blast into this in the next 30 days. We could take a couple of weeks and find out what the best practices are.
And in Florida League of Cities, the Land Use Committee is probably a great resource to go to.
It wouldn't take that long.
Mr. Chambers and?
I was, I was just going to say, I'm willing to change my second again to reflect that.
Get all that, Cheryl.
Sorry Cheryl.
My point is, I need, we need staff to identify this, come back with some recommendations on what we need to do. It's a problem, and it's a perceived problem, we need to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to echo Mr. Ross's suggestion. I mean, let us do some research on what the best practices are and what everybody else is doing before we start crafting resolutions and whatnot. We can certainly get to that point eventually, but let us draft some ideas out for council, share that with you, and then we'll go from there, if that's acceptable.
Yes, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign? Thank you. Is there other new business to come before council? Mr. Ross?
At our last meeting, we had rather extensive discussion about the timeline on this proposed Hillsborough County fuel tax increase. And during the discussion, I was puzzled and kind of scratching my head a little bit because I knew I had seen this on the tentative agenda for several weeks prior to our meeting. So I was confused as to why it was being presented as a shock. So the day after our council meeting, the Wednesday after, I emailed Mr. Stevenson and asked him to give me a timeline of who knew what and when they knew it. When was he notified, who notified who, when that all transpired? When I didn't get a reply to that email by Friday, I made a public records request to get the documents myself. And I know that you guys were all copied on the 60 some odd documents that were uncovered. So I took those documents that you all got and put them in chronological order and established this timeline, which I know you've seen, but I want the public to hear this too. On July 17th, there was an email sent from the county attorney, on July 17th, the Board of County Commissioners voted unanimously to send, to set this proposed fuel tax increase for public hearing. On that same day, July 17th, the county attorney emailed the city attorneys for all three cities in the county and told them of that, and attached the draft of the interlocal agreement and asked that they get that draft, the interlocal agreement, before their councils for approval before the public hearings were held by the BOCC. On that same day, within hours, our city attorney forwarded, or, I'm sorry, not forwarded, sent an email to Mr. Stevenson telling him of this and attaching the interlocal agreement. That was the same day, that all happened on July 17th. On July 18th, Ms. Shashawn sent the email to Mrs. Barlow, Mr. Stevenson's executive assistant, and put the item on the tentative agenda for the August 6th meeting. Right? The email that she sent had the interlocal agreement attached to it. On that, two hours later, on that same day, she got the proposed county ordinance from the county attorney, and she sent that to Mrs. Barlow on the same day, that's July 18th. Right? On July, oh, and she also asked for and received revenue estimates from the county to see what Temple Terrace's share of the proceeds would be in the event the tax was passed. On July 20th, Mr. Stevenson replied to Ms. Shashawn's email that she sent on July 17th, said Pam would love to become party if the commissioners approve, can they provide any numbers? On July 22nd, the item shows up for the first time on the Monday report as a tentative item, agenda item set for the August 6th agenda. The next Monday, July 29th, it shows again as an agenda item on the tentative agenda. On July 29th, that same day, Ms. Shashawn sent the detailed language to Assistant City Clerk Kristen Garcia for inclusion on the agenda. This was the detailed language to be put on the resolution. On July 30th or 31st, I'm not clear which date, but one of those dates, the item was removed from the tentative agenda. Seeing that, on July 31st, Ms. Shashawn sent a memorandum to Mr. Stevenson describing the importance of getting this item before this council in a timely manner. On August 6th, during our meeting, Mr. Stevenson said, I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Merrill late Friday with his attempt to try to explain why we weren't notified of this beforehand. It was sort of dropped on us last week, and certainly my concern was that, was that I didn't have a chance to share with council before I brought over a resolution approving this interlocal agreement. He went on, it has been, in my view, a little haphazard in getting to Temple Terrace, and I expressed that concern to Mr. Merrill on Friday evening when we talked. That being said, they were under the impression that we were going to bring a resolution to have council approve the interlocal agreement this evening and take it to their board tomorrow. After my conversation with Mr. Merrill on Friday, they're now looking to take this to their board on the 21st. He continues, and again, this is a surprise to us. At some point, I then asked about this phone call that happened on Friday because I'm confused of why I kept seeing this on the tentative agenda, and yet this is being presented as a surprise. Mr. Stevenson answered my question and said the phone call originated because I called Mike Merrill on Wednesday to find out what the deal was, we really weren't sure. There was a push out of the county attorney's office to get this before our council here this evening, and I wasn't prepared to do that. He continued, I don't know quite what's going on, to be honest with you. Now, when I got this and assembled this, before I showed this to anybody, I went to Mr. Stevenson and showed it to him, and asked him to clarify for me, is this correct, are there things missing, are there verbal conversations that are not showing up on the public records request, but how can this be? And he yelled at me for 10 or 15 minutes and wagged his finger in my face until I finally left his office with no answers. Now, I don't know how the rest of you feel about this, this is for the city clerk to put in record. I don't know how the rest of you feel about this, I'm hoping to find out here in a moment, but I'm not real happy about it. Thank you.
Well, I'll weigh in. I've had that same kind of meeting in Mr. Stevenson's office where my question was answered with, how dare you ask, or whatever, but I'm not going to go into that. My question to all of you is, what would Mr. Stevenson do if any one of these directors acted in that same way? Would there be a one day, five day, 10 day suspension? Would there be something, so what, I guess I've never been in this position to have to ask that question, but that, thank you very much. I also put the timeline together and spent most of the morning going through and trying to do it, and thank you, you put it together in a very nice package for all of us to read. I realize that Mr. Stevenson isn't happy about this, but I'm guessing anytime he has a situation with an employee who he has to discipline, they're not happy about it either. So my question to us is, what are we going to do about this now? I mean, I'm not ready to fire him, but I am ready to say, this communication has to get better, and that's been, if you look at my evaluations over the years, that's what it said every step of the way, that communication is key. We have to know what is coming before us, when it's coming, why is it coming, give us the backup material, we can't vote unless we know. So I'm speaking to you, I know that Mr. Stevenson is pretty upset behind me, but I'm speaking to each of you, so I'm really asking, just like you are, Mr. Ross, what is our next step? I mean, what is in our purview? I don't even know. So.
Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify a couple of things here, you know, Mr. Ross, your assessment or our conversation is totally wrong. I think you were yelling as much as I was because of your frustration, and I didn't wag my finger at you. That is a blatant lie, and I resent that. I've got a timeline here for each of you, I'd like for you guys to pass this down. I am not going to air dirty laundry here, but I've put together in chronological order everything that happened, including some of the conversations that I had and some of the sidebars I had with city managers, county attorneys, so on and so forth. I'm going to be the better person to not bring out all the dirty laundry in public. Each of you would like to meet with me.
We don't have a choice but to bring it out in public.
Point of order, Mr. Stevenson has the floor.
That was quick.
Just don't want to.
I would be more than happy to remain calm and talk to you guys about what has transpired. There's a lot here that Mr. Ross is not alluding to as being accurate information. That's all I have to say about that. My directors have got a problem, I'd be more than happy to have any of them come up and speak to that.
Well, you may not be ready, but I am. I make a motion to terminate the city manager for cause.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'm not ready to do that. I think there may be, certainly is a communication issue, and I'm not talking about the timeline. I think if a council member goes into the city manager, he's one of our direct reports. I don't know who's right on this conversation, it's a he said, he said thing, but somebody could have handled something better. I have been on the end, Mr. Stevenson, sorry, but I've been on the end where I think I've been preached at more than I should have, but that's your style, and that's somehow being a strong manager. But I'm not ready to terminate.
Councilman Schisler.
I agree with Mr. Chambers. I'm not in a position, I'm not ready to do any termination at this point, I think it's premature, I think it's ridiculous to go to that step. If there's an issue, let's work with the issue, let's address it, and let's figure it out. He works for us. I've been in positions of management for a long time, you just don't slash and burn every time there's an issue. That's my position.
Councilman Chalera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know sitting up here for many years that frustration certainly can overcome individuals. When I sat in the seat next to me, I went and fired Jerry Seber about 100 times, and, you know, I didn't really have the support because other folks were not experiencing what I was experiencing. I've had frustrations with, there's three people that serve this city council, and that's the city clerk, city attorney, and the city manager. I've had frustrations with all three. And I feel that, you know, everybody's experience is a little different. I would like to see a system in place where, when there is a problem, it's documented. And if there's enough documentation by enough people, then that's a problem. I've asked numerous times for policies that at each council meeting we get redevelopment updates, and that happens very little. We've had one contract, supposed to have a contract on the property, we've offered the property south of Burger King, and we still don't even have a contract on that, that was months ago. Where's the update? These people aren't playing ball, they're out of the country. Well, you know what, too bad. Bring it back to the drawing board. I fault the city attorney, I fault the city manager, I fault, you know, that's where I look, I don't look at just one. As, I understand, you know, some of the comments that are being made, but city manager works for the city council, city attorney works for the city council, and the city clerk does as well, they're all responsible to us. Department directors are responsible to the city manager. If there's a problem with a department director or a city employee, something is put in the HR file on that employee. That's how I think we need to be handling the folks that are below the city council Whether we're talking about redevelopment updates, whether we're talking about the mayor's notes, whatever they may be, I, nobody's perfect, and we all make mistakes. And I'm a big fan of saying, hey, can we look at this a little differently? But when it happens again and again, then I got a problem. I mean, you're not, these folks aren't working for $10 an hour, they're responsible folks, and with that becomes responsibility. So, you know, I would like to, you know, I understand there's a motion here, but once, you know, this discussion is had on this motion, I also want to make it a clear policy that if there is any concern, disappointment of responsibilities not being fulfilled, then that issue be discussed, and if there is a consensus by the majority of this council, that file of that individual be documented. Because if you feel uneasy about a person, sometimes there's personality conflicts where when Jerry Seber was here, I felt he was the worst person ever for that job. The rest of the council didn't feel that way, except maybe for David. I would have fired him 100 times, but it was just me. But if that complaint would come from two or three council people, then you're building a case on grounds for termination. And that's maybe something that we need to look at. I don't think in my years of being up here, we've ever adopted anything like that to have submittal into the file of the individuals. At the last meeting, we had talked about the chain of command for the city, I still would like to see that chain of command. I know we reviewed this years ago during the Mr. Lion Ball era, so everybody knows who reports to who. And there's, you know, there's been discussion that the city attorney reports to the city manager, no, city attorney reports to us, the city council, city clerk reports to us, the city manager reports to us. And that's the, what the chain of command shows, and we report to the citizens. And then the rest of the departments obviously goes, flows appropriately accordingly. So I think we all have to have a very clear understanding of the way, and most of you probably know this, of the way the chain of command flows. And I'm not, bureaucracy is not one of my favorite topics, but you have to have structure and policy in place so there's not a free for all, and we go, you know, bounce all over the board. And I don't mean, that's not comments towards the comments this evening, but, you know, the humanity thing, we talked about, I felt that there should be a different structure. Somebody else thought that there should be something, another process. Well, we need to have something in place so we know these are the guiding principles. We need to have guiding principles is what I'm trying to say, I guess. So, once the outcome of this discussion takes place, I will be, you know, addressing a formal motion that we begin a policy where discussions and issues come about, and we document that individual's file through the HR director. So there is a chain of events, shall we say, that supports the grounds for whatever it may be, towards whoever it may be. Like they do in, the department director has to do with an employee, they give them so many warnings, they're documented, and document the file, so then there's not an EEOC complaint, and then there's lawsuits and litigation going back and forth, but it's, if it's appropriately documented over numerous events with different council folks addressing that, then I think you have solid grounds. I'm not saying that discussion this evening is not appropriate, I was not in the meeting, so I can't speak one way or the other. I sense the frustration that's been vented, I've had it with others, in previous administrations here. So, you know, I would just, I'd like to have some sort of structure in place that we all know this is the way we do it. So anyways, I'm going to stop there and give the floor to somebody else.
Councilwoman Donahue.
Yeah, I want to explain my second to your motion. I wasn't prepared to terminate the city manager today, but I definitely think we're sending a clear message, and... a clear message, and it doesn't matter to me how much documentation there is here. The conversation in the meeting last, two weeks ago was, this is a surprise to me, I don't know. Now, if this is all here, then that's just, sorry, that's just a lie, okay? There was a way to say, you know, you don't understand, there's some more to this, rather than, I mean, we, we were willing to hear whatever there was. I know you were quite upset, Madam Mayor, that you had this sprung on you, and we were all feeling the same way. And so, my question to all of you is, if you're not going to support termination, then we need to at least send a clear message that this is not acceptable. This would not be acceptable to any director and to any employee. The easy part is, the directors can talk to each other. We can't talk to each other. So, I, I like, I hear what you're saying, and I hope that there's a way for us to go forward to actually put something in place, because right now, I have no way to let you know of an issue that I have faced, other than to say it here publicly. And, you know, that, it's like, like you said, you don't want to air dirty laundry, so, you know, am I gonna say every time I have a, a combative meeting with the city manager, by the way, he wasn't nice to me again? I mean, no, I'm not, okay? That's, that's not professional on my part. But is it an issue? Yes, it is an issue, and if what you're saying is that I should be documenting all this, then I will. But I, I, I support, I will support the, the motion because I seconded it, but if it fails, I want us to immediately go into the second piece, which, which would be, what is the, what is a punishment for doing this in this manner publicly to us? So, that's my comment, thank you.
The mayor would like to briefly, who has not spoken, would like to speak to this issue. It looks as though there was a confrontation around communication, and it sounds as though it could have been handled better on both sides, so we have an issue to solve, and we have a time issue to solve, and...
You can stare at me if you want.
Excuse me, I'm making my comments, I've allowed you to make your comments, sir, so I'd like to have the floor. One of the challenges is the schizophrenia that this council and mayor put on the three employees that address us. We are one body, that is to act as one body. And when there are six different people giving directives to three employees, at best they're in a tailspin trying to address. I have absolutely no issue with Mr., with Councilman Chalera saying, let us have our guiding principles, let us know a way to address if there are concerns. That allows us to be professional, that allows us to develop strong bonds and expectations going forward. The thought of one person going in and making demands is not what this council is about, nor should it be. The thought of this council reaching out to any director with requests, demands, or orders is not acceptable. We do have three employees. If we are going to reprimand the, the city manager, which I'm not in favor of, I was the one that raised the issue, I was the one that was concerned with the issue, I had the discussion the following day, and was satisfied with the communication I had. If the rest of council is not satisfied, we have another employee that directly answers to us, who knew the same timeline, who sat while I was concerned and said nothing from the dais. So, I don't think we can pick and choose who we're gonna be concerned at based on who knew what information at what time, as we voice very strong concerns to a county. There, I'm sorry, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just have one final thing to say, and the, there was no confrontation that could have been handled better. It was me going into his office and giving him an opportunity to look at this. I, I did not raise my voice. If I had been an employee of the city here, if I had been one of these directors, I would have walked out of his office and walked right down to Janet's office and filed a complaint with HR for his behavior. But I'm not an employee, I can't do that. So set that aside for a second, and suppose that you say, well, it's a he said, he said, okay. Set that aside, that, that, I'm willing to set that aside. We've heard from three different council members here, just in the past few minutes, that they've all experienced the same thing, right? We've, we've heard from three of us, so let's not lose sight of that. So I guess you guys had the same thing, you were at fault too. But forget that too. The timeline that I put in front of you are facts. I was very careful, I did not draw conclusions, I didn't, I didn't add any editorial to this, I didn't say anything that except exactly what is supported in the documentation. There's nothing in here that's opinion, supposition, assigning motives, assigning blame, and we're chalking this up to miscommunication, to lack of, well, the communication's poor. Folks, this is not poor communication, this is miscommunication. This is misleading this council. Now, I don't, I can see how this is gonna go, and that's fine, and I respect, as I said earlier in the meeting, I respect the will of the council, I, I don't have to have my own way on everything, but this is not an emotional thing, this is not a personal thing. This is, I don't see how we can work with a city manager who manipulates the way that information is given to us in order to get us to act a certain way. And we've, we've discussed this before, it's not the first time. How much untruthfulness is too much?
Can I make one more comment?
No, you've, you've spoken twice on, on this issue, as has Mr. Ross, is there any additional comments? There is a motion and a second on the table, there has been discussion, oh, Councilman Schisler.
I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. My interactions with, with Mr. Stevenson have always been positive, always been favorable, always been never confrontational. If we have an issue, we talk it out. If we have disagreement, which we've had some, it, it hasn't been all positive all the time. We have, we've had our discussions in the past. This particular issue I was troubled with, when I left the la, when I left the meeting last week, I too was, at the last meeting, I too was troubled. And I sat down, I went through, and I was, I was glad for the, the information and the timeline. But then I spoke to Mr. Stevenson about it, and I could see where the, the timing, the way it occurred could have been plausible, okay? We all live, we, none of us live in a perfect world. Every one of us will make, we make a mistake, we make a judgment call. Is this something that should be brought up now? Should I bring it up now? Should I bring it up at the next meeting? And then circumstances spiral, and it, and it's too late, you can't do anything about. I think that's primarily the case with this tax. Recognizing the fact that we're not gonna vote for the tax or against the tax, it was unfortunate we didn't know about it, okay? And, but I don't think most people in the county knew about it, okay? So, I mean, we can't, we can't blast him and, and the city attorney for everything that occurred here. I do believe that, that the county is very culpable in, in the fact that nobody knew much about it, except on county commission. So having said that, we, none of us are perfect, we all make mistakes, and anybody who thinks that they're above all of this is, is not being truthful with themselves or with, with everybody else. So, yeah, I think that there should be a process ultimately, where our direct reports can, can have repercussions for various things. I was satisfied with the explanation. I'm not stupid, I know what, I can understand why this occurred, and I can, and I can see where, where if a mistake was made, okay, fine, we learn from it, we move on. I don't think this is, this is a situation where we terminate, I think it sends a terrible message to everybody, staff all the way, our, our direct reports and their direct reports, et cetera, et cetera. I definitely would not vote for, for termination. I believe that the, the, all the good that Mr. Stevenson has done for this city far outweighs this particular misstatement, whatever you want to call it, but I don't think it's a lie, and I don't think it's a misrepresentation, I don't think it's misleading. But, so I'm, I'm definitely against that termination move, and I think that we, it, I just don't see it happening the way it was described, in my personal opinion.
And I will just make a second comment on this issue. I and Mr. Stevenson have had some strong discussions. I respect him, and I trust him. I think what makes Mr. Stevenson an outstanding city manager is that he takes charge and he's hard-driving, and he goes fast, and he's getting the results that this city has been woefully lacking for decades. And I can be hard-headed too, and we have butted heads a couple times. I'm okay with that, because I don't question for a moment, I don't question for a moment the dedication to this city, I don't question for a moment the faithfulness to this city or the commitment to this city. I appreciate council garnering comments tonight, to a level of respect as much as possible, even those with strong opinions. I know as long as I sit in this seat, per parliamentary procedure, the thoughts around duplicity or questioning a person's motives are out of line, are just out of line. And, and with that said, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. I would ask all in favor, the motions signify with aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails, thank you. Mr. Chalera.
I would like to make an attempt to bring forward a, an avenue for this body to be able to express and document unsatisfactory performance. And by that, as much as nobody likes to air dirty laundry or discuss issues, I'm a firm believer in addressing something behind the scenes, if the person gets it, great, if not, then it's time for a on-the-dais discussion. And that's what I would like to adopt as a, a body, that we have a policy in place, that if you can't work it out, whosoever fault it may be or may not be, then the discussion may have to have a cordial discussion on this dais, and if there is a majority of consensus, then that individual's file be documented. And therefore, it can be, that person can be put on notice, call it a reprimand, call it whatever you want. And if you have multiple things, the problem we have is that, and I don't, believe me, I'm not asking for more work to do, but the problem we have is we do evaluations once a year. And sometimes you may forget certain things that happen unless you just run logs and notes about everything, and then you blast it all at one time. I don't want to do evaluations every three months, but my point is, if communication's not working, then it needs to come to this body for discussion. And at that point, if there's, there's a consensus, obviously, then it gets documented in that individual's file, as it would with a, an employee of a lower rank. If there's a problem, the director's gonna call in and say, hey, get your act together, this is your warning, it's going in your file. And they're gonna do it again and again, and whatever their procedures or protocols are, if it gets to a certain point, there's grounds for termination, then they go to the next step at the next level. I don't have the perfect picture in my mind, it's a, a structure like this, it's just something that I'm throwing out there to see if there's any traction from these, from the council, to have an avenue to address a problem, a, 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 a lack of performance, or whatever you want to call it, and then it can be called from there. So, I would just, you know, I can make a motion, or if other folks want to speak.
If you could put that in the form of a motion, then we'd be able to speak to it.
My intent, my intentions for a motion would be that this council adopt a procedure to bring forward a, a, a concern or a complaint with one of the three members of, of our city government, city clerk, city manager, city attorney, to discuss in front, in, on this dais with council members, to be able to document the individual's file, if there is a, a mutual feeling about the same situation. That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Discussion. Well, my question is, we're putting this on our HR director, right? So now, she works for a city manager, so now I, I have a complaint against the city manager, are you suggesting that I bring it to the dais? Or I simply document it and put it in the file, and then at some point, I mean, I, I mean, you know, I don't, I just don't see that happening. I mean, we can say we're gonna do that, but we're not, okay? I mean, just, just think about the ramifications of that. We're having a hard enough time tonight, and we haven't even discussed if we should impose some penalty for this transgression that we are talking about tonight. So that's my question, is, is if, we have an HR director, she's a professional, she knows how to handle this type of thing, however, she works for, you know, I mean, I, that's why we talked about the chain of command, is so that we would know where these things go. I mean, I think it's too vague at this point to, I mean, who do we pass this off to?
Okay, let me simplify it for you, so you can understand in a better manner. If we have a complaint about an employee that works for us, this council make a motion, put it in a formal form of writing, and it go into the individual's file. Where all files, all the files are held in the HR department. Has nothing to do with the HR director, it's just going in that file. She has nothing to say or do about it, all the action's happening here. You know, if you don't like the way whoever is not doing something, I'm not getting redevelopment reports, I've asked for them over and over and over again, it's not happening, the developers come up here, we ask questions, when are we closing? Nobody has an answer. Who do we write up? The city, city, city attorney or the city manager? Council? I'm, I'm frustrated with it. The owner of the apartment's got up and answered a question, and our attorney and our manager couldn't answer it. When are we closing? That's a problem. Do you want to address it or not? I've made motions on this dais, that we get updates at every single council meeting for redevelopment. There's more times we leave with no updates than times that we do, okay? If you get frustrated enough, you make a motion, I have a problem with city clerk reporting to us and the city manager reporting to us. If there's a consensus in a motion, that goes in the individual's file, done. It's not rocket science. I just mentioned the HR director, because it's the HR department, I won't mention the HR director, it goes in the individual's file. Every individual that works for the city has a file, and it goes in that file, and it's on the record of the minutes. So that's all I'm trying to say, because if you ever want to terminate somebody, you have to build a case, unless something does, somebody does something so bad that you could terminate him on the spot. So you have to build a case, build a case to the minutes, build the case in the individual's file, but it's by no means, no means of putting the, the HR director on the spot, it's going in the individual's file, based on the actions of this council.
Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with, with Frank, I, it's unfortunate we have to do this, but given the, the current status of situation, I think it's in the best interest of everybody concerned, to keep it positive, as, as, I keep it, keep it moving forward. No way should there be any further punishment, the public humiliation of this discussion is more than ample. The damage that's been done on the chain of command below him, to me, is incalculable, and I would hope that, that, that his, that the direct reports do not change the way that they, they view their, their city manager. For us to discuss that any further, I think, to me, is just reprehensible. If we gotta do something, then I agree with Frank's, I like Frank's suggestion, that if, if you have an issue, you bring it to the, to, to council, and if the council, as a majority of council agrees, yeah, it's a problem, then we'll do something. But until then, some of this is just personal, personal biases and issues, and I think it's gotta stop. We all gotta play well in the sandbox.
Absolutely, and I will just weigh in, that the thought of us individually running to put notes in anyone's files is inappropriate, is not part of how we do business as a council, and is not the way to go about doing this. The individual attacks because of personalities and other things.
The individual attacks because of personalities and other things. It comes before, it comes before council. We act as a body. We take a vote, and then we move on. Frank has made a motion, there's been a second, we've had discussion. Is there any additional discussion?
Yes, I have a question. So we have an issue, and we bring it here, and it has to be approved by everybody else that, that this, this happened? I mean, does that happen? That doesn't normally happen? You don't have, that, I'm trying to avoid this public display, if you will, that's, I think that, and thank you for trying to explain it to me so that I could understand, but it still begs the question, when you have that confrontation and you leave, for whatever reason, feeling like this should be reported, you really want us to come here? Like, once again, this is our only way to say this, and I'm trying to avoid that while at the same time saying, you know, look, I mean, I've had a conversation with Mr. Stevenson where he said, well, look, just take it to council. And I said, I'm trying not to do that. So I guess that's, I understand what you're trying to do, I just don't think we're there yet. So I cannot vote to support something that is still so vague and that, I mean, it's like an unfunded mandate. Bring it to council. We're not going to do that. We're not going to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have a motion to move forward and begin to sculpt how we can, as a council, bring things forward to the body. Thank you very much. Is there any additional new business?
Madam Mayor, I do have something I would like to address, and I know we've been here a while tonight. If we do not have a contract by the next city council meeting with Tierra Group, I suggest that we take this back out to bid on the market. This is way, this is probably the longest negotiated contract that we've ever entered into. We're not even in contract yet, and I'm not sure where we are, what we're doing. This is the Tierra Group, you don't have a contract yet, because last time I asked, that the bidder is out of the country. And you know what? I get it. But in today's world, with technology, emails, telephones, it must not be that important because it's on our dime right now. And this has been months, months. This is the property south of the Burger King. That's the one I'm talking about. The apartments are slated to close here, hopefully in September. The Just Breaks guy, you know, he's already proven he's going to get it closed and do what he's got to do. But this guy here, we don't have a contract. And I've asked a few times here, and we got a note from the manager's office saying that they're working on a few items, but you know what? Long enough is long enough. This is way, way too long. And if this guy doesn't want to do what he's got to do, bring it back to market because this has been way too long. So my, that's going to be my, unless somebody has something new to offer, that's my motion to put this person on notice without a contract by the next meeting. We already negotiated the price, it's just having the contract that one, two, three other developers already have entered into, and this guy, you know, he can't apparently come to grips to sign the contract. So my motion is by the next meeting, or else we, you know, put him on notice that we're terminating and going back out to market.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Can I hear from our city attorney first?
Can we have, we have a motion on the table? We need a second before we enter into discussion. We have a motion and a second, discussion.
I'd like to hear from the attorney, if she has a response.
The contract has been prepared, and the problem has simply been only that we just don't have a firm concept plan as to what is being built and where it's being placed. Issues have come up with regard to, and is Mr. Polly still here? We just talked about this again today, we talk about it regularly. Yes, the purchaser did go out of the country for quite a length of time, and it was not easy to communicate. Discussions have been held recently, and it all depends, it's all stemming around the positioning of the building, it seems, and connections of driveways from a piece we have already sold to the new one. That's it. We are hesitating at entering into a contract because this is the, this is the redevelopment area. This isn't just a piece of property anywhere where we don't really care what goes on in some little piece of property. This is a main focus area. So you don't want to sign a contract unless you know what you're going to have there. And until that's firmed up, I would not recommend signing anything. So.
Ma'am? Yes, just to reiterate what Ms. Shisler touched on, I have been in contact with Mr. DiGiavani recently. In fact, I've been in contact with both the developers that you referenced within the last five days. We are trying to plan this downtown area so that it is cohesive in structure and layout. We have four completely independent developers that are not working off of a master plan. What that means in the simplest of terms for the folks maybe at home that are wondering what we're talking about, is we want sidewalks to line up, we want driveways to line up, we want commonality in decorative features and facades and elevations, and we're not asking them all to build cookie cutter projects, but we are asking them to come together with some consistency in their design. Now, let me flashback to the original rough rendering that was presented by the Matera Group, Mr. John DiGiavani. Mr. DiGiavani presented a product that he felt was appealing to the masses. It's a project that, it's a look that his company likes to put out there. It's a beautiful rendering, but it doesn't exactly fall in line with our downtown overlay district standards. We have certain standards that we have now gone back to him. In fact, Mr. Stevenson and myself, just, just recently, within the last couple of days, had another conference call with Mr. DiGiavani, who is now back in the country as of this week. He is absolutely amenable to working with us. The biggest thing that I had to ask him to consider was flip-flopping his layout. If you recall, he's got two buildings, one about 15,000 square feet, one about 9,000 square feet. And he's got the largest building backed up against what we commonly refer to as B Street. It will eventually get a new name, but it's right now we call it B Street. We would like him to flip-flop his layout so that we can have commonality in passage from one project to another. If he moves forward and we ink a contract with that plan, it's going to create discord with the traffic flow for the whole area. So even though he, as a developer, and his engineers and his architects are looking at his two-acre parcel, as a city, we're all, and I say all because all of us with DRC, the city manager, the city attorney, we're all closely looking at how all of these puzzle pieces fit together. So I understand the frustration that we still don't have a contract inked, but I stand before you and I assure you, it is not because he is unwilling to move forward. It's because some of the discussions that we've had with him have had, have caused him to go back to the drawing board on his side. Just, I want to say it was Friday, within the last couple of workdays, he asked, could we please submit, or share with him the renderings from some of the other developers? Because we do have, in our planning, we have a Mediterranean facade, and we have a Spanish Revival facade for the architecture down, in the downtown overlay district. So just recently, I shared all of that with him. We're talking huge files, so we have to go and use Dropbox and shared files and things of that nature. It's not something that I can just click an email and send it to you. These things are much more involved than that. But just, I want to say probably Friday, I was just able to share all of that with him. So again, I reiterate, I, I understand the frustration that's being voiced, but from the staffer that has talked to this man on a regular basis, and recently, as in the last couple of days, he is not in any way trying to avoid moving forward. He's simply trying to modify what he's presenting so that it doesn't create discord for the overall complex. I hope that answers some of the questions.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there?
I have questions, I'm sorry. Please. How long ago did we award this contract to this developer? A couple of months?
Yes.
Okay. So let me tell you the way it works in the industry, okay? How much deposit does this contractor have in place right now?
He doesn't have a contract.
Zero. Exactly. Thank you very much. So no skin in the game as far as financial goes. He's got a little time invested into it. Let me tell you the way it works in the, in the, in the industry. You reach a contract, they come forward, say, we're going to give you 20,000 square feet. Okay? Great. Drop a contract. That's the purpose of due diligence. And his due diligence period, when the clock is ticking and he starts to have skin in the game, money, taxpayer return on investment, then the burden's on him. I assure you, if he was on vacation, out of the country, you'd get, you'd get a hell of a lot more communication if that clock was ticking. His clock's not ticking right now. He's got all the time in the world. But we're doing it backwards. You have to have a contract in place, then his due diligence is when he works all this out. The apartments didn't have a site plan in place, we just approved it the other night. The guy in the corner didn't have a site plan in place because he's looking for banks and Starbucks and everything else. None of that was in place. Now we have a new precedent.
No, no, that's not true.
What's different?
On all those other contracts, we had a concept plan that was presented to council at the time that they approved it. We had a concept plan that was an attachment to each contract so that we would be able to hold their feet to the fire if anything went wrong, to make them, under that contract, build what we expected them to build. That's the point. We don't have a contract now because I don't have a picture. I don't have a picture to someday show a judge and say, this is what we expected them to build in our downtown area. That's the only thing holding this up right now, is Mr. Polly and the Matera Group are working on their picture to make it a part of the contract. And every other contract we had, had a concept plan attached.
In the meantime, the taxpayers are picking up the tab for this guy taking a switch.
If you want to take your chances on what you're going to find built there, I'll send them the contract tomorrow.
It's not taking your chances. We have redevelopment guidelines, they have to buy by those guidelines, and he knows what those guidelines are when he entered into contract. We know how many square feet it is, because on the guy in the corner originally, he, he didn't show a drive-through, because he came here and pleaded and said, staff won't give me a drive-through, we'll give you a drive-through. All that wasn't discussed. He wanted to plead it at the final, at the end, Jared Mooney on the corner, when we said, we'll do the drive-through. That wasn't in the renderings. He gave us 25,000 square feet. That's all been worked with staff and said, we're going to do a bank here, we're going to a Starbucks here. All those fine details came out once he got into contract, because he's going to have different tenants come in, depending who can, who he can sell this property to, and I guarantee you, it will change from what he's telling you.
Right. I'm not talking about every minor detail. I'm talking about the look of the building and the placement of the buildings.
We have redevelopment guidelines in place, do we not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. He entered into this agreement, made a proposal, agreeing to our redevelopment guidelines. That was part of the deal, he would build to the redevelopment guidelines. He said, we're going to give you X amount of square feet. So the only point I'm making is, get a contract in place and then start talking about all this because they have due diligence. If he doesn't like it, he could tell you, hey, I'm not interested, I don't like what you're doing, I'm done, give me my money back. But then it's under a contract. Right now, he's negotiating on our dime. He's not bound by it. If you impose conditions on him that he does not like, he can get out of it, under the due diligence, under contract. Right now, there is no contract. So we're spinning our wheels, like, yeah, maybe this is going to come through, maybe it's not, but I still get my paycheck every week, so redevelopment's still a burden, we can't sell these properties. We need to basically put our arms around this thing and squeeze and say, guys, come on, either punt or get off the field. And I'm just asking you to get a contract in place, is all I'm saying. In the industry, you get contracts in place, and then their due diligence is exactly that, their due diligence to see if they can comply with all the things that you guys want to do. We're negotiating basically within the contract, what we know we do within the contract, without you having a contract. That's why you have a due diligence. That's the purpose of it. Talk to any commercial real estate broker and see. Have we negotiated, you know, I don't think we've negotiated this long with, with the others. We have a contract in place, and then we start going through all these different things. When Mr. Stevenson came to us and said, the apartments are going here, we had a contract in place. We're going to move the features, we're going to do this road here, we're going to do that. Contract that was in place, they're working within their due diligence. So my point is, get a contract in place, and then we have somebody that at least has put some skin in the game at that point. They have a deposit down, that they can still get back if they back out of their due diligence. But it's what I do. And this guy's taking advantage of our city right now. It's too long. Get a contract in place and he can negotiate it. If you don't like what you're proposing to him, he can get out and get his money back. But get something in place that's been way too long, way too long. Thank you.
There is a motion for contract to be in place with the Tierra Group, but.
I'm going to rescind my motion. If a contract is not in place by the next council meeting, I will be bringing a motion forward.
You rescind it? Okay.
Yes.
I have a question.
Mr. Polly, how close do you think we are to a contract? I mean, I know that's between.
I'll let Ms. Shisler speak to that, because she's, I believe, sitting on the draft that's already been reviewed and ready to go, but I'll let her detail that for you.
If I'm not, if I'm not waiting to attach a concept plan, I can go ahead and have it in their hands by Friday. Mr. Stevenson and I have already gone over one of the contracts, we've ironed out the issues that we had internally, and I can have the contract to them by Friday.
One more comment. I think this proves Mr. Chiller's point, that even if it's, even if it's every Friday, we just get something that says, this week, we worked on this, this, and this, then that would go a long way to helping our comfort level, that, because I know you're working on it, I know you're working on it, I know you're working on it. We seem to be putting things to them as much as them to us, about, you know, side, like you said, sidewalks and elevations and positions and things like that. So I think this conversation is because of that lack of constant feeding us. Obviously, we're, we're all being asked these questions on a daily, if not weekly, definitely basis. What's going on? What's going on? And we can't answer because we haven't been told. So please, I hope you hear that.
So you've rescinded your motion? Thank you. Is there any additional new business?
I do have one item that I'd, I'd like to bring forward, and I want to thank Fire Captain Sullivan, but to make our city aware that on November 4th and 5th, our Temple Terrace Fire Department will be hosting the 11th Annual Statewide Emergency Medical Services Challenge. This is a two-day, multi-scenario event designed to train, challenge, and educate teams participating from organizations across Florida. One of the exciting things that our Temple Terrace firemen are looking to do this year is to offer a scholarship. So at, at this point, details, Fire Captain Sullivan at 679-6100, 679-6100. And what we're looking at is a shout-out from individual citizens, our women's club members, our junior women's club, our churches, our businesses, our chambers, our rotary, who might be willing to invest to see a young person who is interested in a career in fire services perhaps get a scholarship. So I know that our fire department is working arduously on this. They do have more information available than I do, but I did want to share it with our citizens because I know how supportive we are of first responders. And with that, we'll go to the city manager's report, Mr. Stevenson.
Madam Mayor, I don't have anything to share with council this evening.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to come before us? Our meeting is adjourned.